Hi, we are going to get started. I'd like to open the Dover Sherburne Regional School Committee meeting of April 2nd, 2013. And first, I would like to ask if there are any public comments? Seeing none, we will move to reports. We have Elizabeth Rommel here tonight to present from the Student Council.
You just talked to us.
You guys remember me, right? So, I'm updating for Student Council. And on March 5th, we had the Red Cross Blood Drive, and it was really successful. We got forty kinds of blood, which is a really good turnout. And then this upcoming Friday, last period, we have April Antics, which is also known as March Madness, where students play against teachers in a basketball game, and the class officers compete against one another for fun. And it's like a school spirit building activity. And then, in May, we had the Teacher Appreciation Assembly. And that's just to appreciate teachers and the chorus, or not chorus. What do they call it?
Acapella.
Acapella, thank you. Sing. And then, we recently met with Mrs. Lonigan about the town meetings, and we discussed what each grade wanted to change in school. And we came up with some good ideas, and Mrs. Lonigan's going to work on our ideas. And I think that's it. So that's all we have.
And Denise, we usually see those, and I always ask for this because I always find it so special.
In the school improvement plan.
Okay, so we'll see that. Great, thanks. Any questions for Elizabeth?
Thank you.
Elaine?
Yep.
Thanks, Elizabeth.
Thank you.
Under number four, Goal One, Academic Excellence, we have the High School Report. Ms. Lonigan?
Thank you. And I was wondering if you would mind if we went a little bit out of order, because Mr. Borg has to be somewhere. And so I'd like to begin with your approval, or your consideration for approval, of the close-up trip for next year. And this is a trip that we had done once before, and this is the Pacific Basin trip to Hawaii. The dates of it would be February 1st to February 9th, 2014, and there would be school dates 2-3 through 2-7. That information, I think, is in your packet. And I didn't know if anyone had any questions that the information didn't address.
Members? Any questions, Mr. Borg? All right, I would then entertain a motion to approve the out-of-state field trip as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor? It passes four, two absences. Thank you.
That was a lot easier than I thought. I thought someone was going to act like a chaperone. Yeah? Thank you very much.
Well, we usually say, can we go? You know, we usually have our same reactions. Can we go? That sounds fabulous.
And also, the troublemakers aren't here, so.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
And the next item is a request for acceptance of the gift from PTO for three additional chairs in the library. And those are the same chairs that you approved last year, and they would like to replace three more.
These are so generous when I see the cost. I would like to entertain a motion to accept the PTO gift for three additional chairs for the high school library. Any discussions? All those in favor? Four, two absences. Our appreciation to the PTO.
And then I'd just like to point out a few key points in my monthly report. The first is, I want to congratulate everyone involved with West Side Story. If you saw the musical, it was truly outstanding. So congratulations to the cast, the crew members of the pit band, the director. And I'd like to make special mention of Lauren Walker, who will be leaving. She was the choreographer. And also Judy Cranshaw. As many of you know, Judy is retiring this year. And Judy has been the production assistant for forty shows in her years at Dover Sherburne, and that is truly amazing. She has served in many roles. She stepped in at one point, and actually was the director for a little bit when there was an illness, someone couldn't be there. She has been the calming force when there have been many instances of concern. She's always found a way to manage the myriad roles that she plays in this, from costumes to props to makeup to whatever. She's just done a phenomenal job. And it's wonderful that she's been in the school, and students have been able to access her during the day if they've had concerns. She just has had a wonderful calming effect, and she's been a tremendous talent, so she will be missed. So I just wanted to make mention of Judy, and the fact that forty shows is quite a lot. I also wanted to point out that the end-of-season athletic report is in here for you, so that you can take a look at the many awards that our students got, and teams mentioned as winners of the sportsmanship award, so congratulations on that. I wanted to point out that we have finished the English Language MCAS, and the box is ready to be picked up, thankfully. And now we are preparing for the math, and then, of course, the science is in June. I want to thank PTO for the wonderful staff appreciation that they held for us on the early release day, March 20th, during the lunch hour, and thank anyone who contributed in any way to that initiative. The staff truly appreciated it. We have our China Exchange Group coming back on April 5th. And I'm sure one member of this committee is especially anxious for that to happen. So although I've been following the blog, I'm anxious to speak with them in person, to hear a little bit about their experiences, and remind everyone of the China banquet on May 9th at 6:30 PM in Lincoln Commons. If anyone is interested in hosting or doing any activity, they should contact Rebecca Vizelis once our Chinese delegation arrives, and we expect them to arrive the end of April and stay until the end of May. I want to point out that Term III grades close on April 5th, and when parents and guardians receive the grade reports via Aspen, they will see that we are now going to be reporting out on the school-wide academic rubrics. And I had sent this information out earlier, but I just wanted to remind people that teachers will be reporting out on students' attainment of the five rubrics of reading, writing, speaking, problem-solving, designing and creating. So that will just be an additional piece on the report card that parents will have access to. And this was done in response to the NEASC recommendations, and then we are also working on reporting out on the social and civic. So that's in the works. Coming up, of course, we have the Jazz Spectrum Concert on Tuesday, April 9th, and I would hope that if you have the opportunity that you attend that. This is a combined high school, middle school jazz band concert, and it's wonderful to see the progress that students make from grade six through high school. So if you have any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer them.
Any questions? I really encourage people to go on the website and look at the high school and middle school reports, because it really does give a really good flavor of what's been happening in the schools and individual students and staff.
And I wanted to point out that I did pass out the end-of-year activities for seniors and, of course, the junior-senior prom. And we don't have all of the information yet, because the baccalaureate is not school-run. But we can give you the date and TBA as far as the rest of the details go. And we're not sure this year if we're having the senior tier or not. As you know, that's become a tradition, so we're still waiting to hear if that's going to happen. But the dates and times and information related to the other events that we do know about are listed there, and we will be emailing this to students and posting it on our website, so that parents can access this, because it contains a lot of helpful information for people to put into their schedules this time of year, again, it's very busy.
From here on in for you. So since you brought this to our attention, Denise, I want to bring it to the school committee's attention that the chair oftentimes hands out the diplomas at the commencement exercise, unless there's another committee member who would like to. Typically, it's when their son or daughter is graduating. So this year, Ellen Williamson will happily give out the diplomas. So the tote boat is just letting everybody know. If somebody needs to know for the program. Thank you. Okay, and cross that off. My to-do list is having been addressed.
All right.
Okay.
If I could just also recognize, to echo what Mrs. Lonigan shared about Judy Cranshaw, she has been phenomenal, not only in her role through the performing arts, but as chairperson of the LFTA Department. She has been just phenomenal to work with. A consummate professional, dedicated to advancing the curriculum in those areas, and we appreciate everything that she's done. She will be missed.
She certainly will.
Thank you.
All right, is that it? Ms. Lonigan for the high school?
That's it.
Okay. So moving on to the middle school report. Mr. Kelleck?
I would like to report too. We have finished the MCAS, and we shipped ours already.
We had to wait for one more.
We shipped ours.
I'll get you for that.
I just, there are two things I wanted to add to. They're both, well, one was not even included in the report. That is, we have, our eighth-grade teachers have selected our nouns, or nomenclature of middle schools, scholar leaders for this year. And it wasn't included in the report, because I wanted the students to have the opportunity to share it with their parents before it was, could get back to them otherwise. Eric Levine, one of our eighth graders, and Dana Rice will represent us as our scholar leaders this year. The other piece is kind of an add-on. I mentioned the transition, fifth-to-sixth grade transition, and we have started that process. Last week, Mr. Shagnin, my servant, and Mrs. Egan went to Chicaring, and we brought along with us two current sixth graders who were with Ms. Shagnin and I. Ms. Egan gave students an overview of the foreign language program. And Ms. Shagnin and I may as well have gone out for coffee after a few minutes, because the students took over and did a fabulous job presenting and answering questions for the fifth graders. And I think it was much more effective than myself and Ms. Shagnin, knowing it because it was coming from two individuals who were very well-spoken and were in their seats last year at this time.
That's fabulous.
And we'll do the same tomorrow down at Pine Hill. So that worked out very well. And then on Thursday, not to jump the gun, there's an update later about Mr. Maringer. On Thursday, we're meeting with the parents in Mudge Auditorium, and Mr. Maringer will be joining us just to show himself to the incoming fifth-grade parents and start his transition. He will be joining us over April vacation.
Wow. Yeah.
Yeah, we're very excited. I've been in contact with him several times, and he is very antsy to get here.
Nancy works well here.
That's an understatement.
All right, and you have a donation for the music stand, and it is from a parent?
Yes. Yes, I believe it's a $40 donation, a parent made for a music stand, for the entire high school and middle school, but it came through Mr. Duprey.
Okay. So I'd like to entertain a motion for the regional school committee to accept the donation of the music stand by Mr. and Mrs. Auker.
It's a Z.
Any second?
Second.
Any discussion on this music stand?
Really?
Greatly appreciated. All right, all those in favor? Four yeses and two absences. All set?
Yes.
Thank you. We now have the superintendent's update by Assistant Superintendent, Mr. Bliss.
Good evening. Thank you very much. I just want to take a couple moments, an update on where we stand with a few of the searches. But before doing that and including it in the construct of the report, it's just a recognition and a thanks to our school committee members, and to Dover, Warrant, to Sherburne Advisory, to our select people, to Chris Tagg and the Finance Office for a job exceptionally well-done in managing what was a very difficult budget season. And we thank profusely, Kathy's in the audience, Brooks is here, and Lanny, thank you so much for your leadership with your respective towns. We appreciate it immensely. And I think in the final analysis, we're all here for the kids and for delivering the best quality education we can provide. So we thank you, and we thank the school committee and the Finance Office. Good job, well done. Not quite there yet, but it was difficult, and we thank everyone involved. Onto the searches, of which we have a few underway. We are exceptionally pleased, and you're probably one of the few and the first to hear, we do have a new high school headmaster, Dover Sherburne Regional High School. Mr. John Smith comes to us from Westboro High School, where he's the sitting principal, and has been for six years. Prior to being at Westboro, he was at Neshova Regional High School, where he served as principal and as a teacher for several years. The process was very intense, as one might imagine, some pretty big shoes to fill in retiring headmaster. Size six-and-a-half, Denise, we know. We had a fifteen-person search committee that has worked for several weeks, and we thank Mr. Robinson for being a delegate from the regional school committee on that committee. And we looked at credentials of forty-three applicants, some of whom are international, and the committee worked tirelessly to whittle that down to a group of six people that were interviewed. We had those individuals in for a ninety-minute interview each, with fifteen very well-developed and well-vetted questions that were asked of each of the candidates as they moved through the process. Last Thursday, we invited the two semifinalists to spend the day, or better part of the day, on campus, meeting with parents, regional school committee members, a group of students, various administrators. We conducted an exhaustive reference check on both semifinalists, speaking to, we had asked for a list of ten references, and we credential-checked against five of those folks, many of whom we identified by title, people that we wished to speak with. We spent about thirty-five to forty minutes on the phone with each of those references to really get a sense of the candidates. Over the weekend, I engaged in contract negotiations with Mr. Smith, and we came to terms on the contract today, and in fact, he got signed on the dotted line. So I will have lunch with John next week, and we'll begin to chart out his transition, and I'm sure he's very eager to come in to speak at our next regional school committee meeting as well.
In May?
In May.
Excellent.
Very exciting. No, thank you. Thank you, Richard.
Please, kiss him. Are welcome and congratulations. That's wonderful.
And I have to tell you that both finalists, here's what really sort of sealed the deal. We really spent a lot of time making sure the process for the candidates was enjoyable, and that we put everything that we're so proud of at Dover Sherburne out there for the candidates to see. Both semifinalists said the process, and they're active in all the searches, was truly enjoyable, that they got a genuine sense of warmth and of dedication to doing what's best for kids. And that means a lot to a search committee, to be able to have people who had no exposure to us prior, to be able to emerge with that kind of experience. That's what the caliber of presentation we always seek to communicate, and we think we accomplished that mission. So, thank you so much.
And as long as kudos are going out here, I think the process was extraordinarily well-done, and if it's a hint of the future, we're going to.
Thank you. Thank you, Richard. Thank you. It was a pleasure.
So I'm looking at Ms. Lonigan while we talk about this, because I was driving home from Boston last night with a Sherburne parent, and we were just singing your praises. So we look with enthusiasm towards the person who replaced you, because we need a replacement. But I just, you have been a consummate professional, and there will be a time to acknowledge everything that you've been done. So while we're excited about Mr. Smith, it just brings back, there, I'm going to get emotional, brings back everything you've done for the school. So there will be a time and place for it. But I'm feeling both.
And I wish him the best.
Denise was actually, Denise and Ellen both were on the search committee when I was hired four years ago. And from that day forward, Denise, you have been one of, you're just an administrator that I can really call a friend, and you're phenomenal.
Well, thank you.
I mean that, and that's not an overstatement at all. Every detail is followed up on. You care immensely for every single student and family in our two-member towns, and we can't thank you enough for your thirty-three years.
Thank you. So I'm not really the "nay" you said I was?
No. I hit "unsend" on those emails.
I want to know how you know her shoe size.
Some things we can't talk about.
Councilors know shoes.
Onto our other searches as well. We have appointed the assistant headmaster of the middle school in Mr. Brian Maringer, who again will join us beginning on April, Monday, April 15th. This is start day, actually. So I don't know, Mr. Kelleck, do you want to do some of the intro?
He's coming to us from Cokely Middle School in Norwood, where he is currently, he has been for the past three years, the housemaster. And prior to that, he taught in Concord Middle School, Rockport. He started in Rockport, was in Concord, and in Wellesley as well. And we also went through a very similar process that was very successful, and I can't say. We're very excited for him to join us. I think he and I will be having dinner Thursday before we meet with the parents, and it's going to be a good mix, good fit.
That's terrific. Thank you. Onto our, and we welcome Brian here. Onto our guidance department. We had promised to provide an update, and while we're sort of handing out the accolades and the kudos, Mrs. Joanne Kenny will retire at the end of the school year, of course, as we all know, having served our school system exceptionally well for the past thirteen years. And she too is a hard act to follow in the guidance department. We thank Joanne. She actually was quite a stabilizing factor, I believe, Denise, when you assumed the position as headmaster.
Yes, she was during the years of transition that had preceded.
Yeah. So she was really, and has been, a consummate rudder on the ship, you know, keeping us steered in the right direction. And with Joanne's retirement, we're trying to really be quite respectful of Joanne and of the department, and enlisting a lot of the input in terms of revising the job description for the Director of Guidance. We have pulled in about seven or eight different job descriptions from analogous school districts. We've asked for Joanne's input and that of the guidance department in looking at the job description and revising that entire process. So we're quite pleased with where we are. But the more we thought about the potential reorganization of the department, the guidance counselors really want to play an active role in working with the new director in forming that department. And the more we sort of thought about, do we bring in a guidance director and sort of say, here's your reorganized department? Or do we bring in a guidance director who has a lot of the competencies and attributes we seek, and allow that person to work with his or her department in really sort of redefining the mission and sort of the way the work gets done? There are a lot of very innovative approaches that can be adopted. So that's what we will look for in our guidance director, someone who sort of has that innovative, how can we deliver the best quality service, but maybe rebrand and retool the way we deliver that service? And in the advent of having the additional .6 guidance counselor complement, we now have a staffed guidance department pending town meeting approval of our budget, of core town meetings approval. We will have another guidance counselor in position. What that has essentially done to the student caseload for each of our counselors has taken the average counselor caseload of one hundred and ninety-five students down to about one hundred and sixty-five students. And that was significant. I mean, you just couldn't imagine the look on the counselors' faces the other day when they said, you know, now they can do a lot of the clinical work and college work that they wanted to really do in a deeper, more meaningful way with their students, but the sheer numbers have really worked sort of against them. And with that, we are thrilled to be able to announce that the guidance counselor who's been hired for that position, and I was on the phone with him this afternoon, is Mr. Robert Williamson. Rob Williamson has been our .4 guidance counselor at the high school for essentially this entire school year, most of the school year, and he will now be moved into the position as the 1.0 guidance counselor. I have never seen someone who's sort of amalgamated with the department the way that Robert has. I remember looking out in the auditorium at one of our opening-day assemblies, and there he is, like, plunk in the middle of all the guidance counselors, and they've got their arms around him, and he was just completely embraced as a family member in that department, and it's phenomenal. Rob comes to us with an undergraduate degree from Brown University, with a bachelor's degree in international relations, where he had a 3.93, a 3.98 GPA. After being graduated from Brown, he then went to work in the admissions department as the Associate Director of Admissions for Brown. And most recently, he's on the process of finishing his Master's in School Counseling degree at Boston University, and we have very strong recommendations from not only internal stakeholders, but also from many of his professors at Boston University. He brings a wealth of talent to the office, and energy and enthusiasm and innovation that will be, and already has been, proven. So we welcome Rob, and I was on the phone with him this afternoon. It's been kind of a day of, a day of deal-making.
That's my sock for you.
So, yeah. So I think we're updated on the searches. The Assistant Superintendent search?
Can I just, and I'll bet you said this, and I just missed it. What's the timeline for the guidance search? How's that going? I bet you said it, didn't you?
No, I did not yet say that. So that would be, we envision in the next couple weeks to really be able to put that, you know, we're working with the guidance department right now, and looking at the job description, and doing a lot of the work that we've also been working on with the Assistant Superintendent Search Committee, which just kicked off last week, but we've already had two meetings. That's a sixteen-person search committee. We have three school committee representatives. Mr. Lee is the representative from the regional school committee. Lauren Doherty is the representative from the Dover School Committee, and from Sherburne is Ann Hovey. We have a number of parents, administrators on the search committee, and we have met twice, and we already have forty-eight applicants for the position of Assistant Superintendent. So that would be a lot of work to be able to go through. That, we really spent an enormous amount of time as a committee looking at what has happened with the role of the Assistant Superintendent over the past four years, and what are we looking for that person to do moving forward? Because the position really has evolved. So it would really be more of an Assistant Superintendent of teaching and learning, and to really take the deep dive into the curriculum work that we've sort of begun on a lot of the periphery. So that's really the expertise we seek in that position. So to answer your question, Mr. Robinson, the next couple of weeks, we'll have to get some synergy behind the guidance director position as well.
A lot going on. Well, thank you.
So is that the end of your report, Steve? School choice, that's further down in the agenda.
Yep.
All right, so while we're talking about your report, I guess we should use this time also just to announce that Ms. Spriggs is not here this evening, because she left last week, or ten days ago?
She left right after the Saturday opening budget hearing.
And Sunday, she was part of her daughter's, the birth of her grandson, and she was in with her daughter for the labor and delivery, and she is a very proud grandmother and will still be down in Atlanta for at least a couple of weeks, two or three weeks. So the pictures have been phenomenal, and it's a big blessing in her life and her daughters.
It is. They were just, they were great pictures, and Sawyer Spriggs, Valerie's daughter, Holly Spriggs in Atlanta, and Sawyer was born at 1:04 on Easter Sunday, and weighing in at six pounds, fourteen ounces, nineteen inches long. And it's just phenomenal, and it was great to just receive the reports and to just be able to see Valerie really take some time to enjoy. She's so self-give, so selfless in what she does with her job, and in giving to so many other families. It's nice to see her making such an investment in her own family in the next chapter.
All right, thanks. We are moving on to the budget. Christine, we have the FY '13 budget.
I'm glad that we can finally present a report again for the month of March. Basically, the analysis on salaries is showing we're down a little bit from what was projected back in February and January by about $30,000, because the overtime account for the custodial staff is basically almost spent at this stage of the game. And we still have the summer help that needs, that they'll probably start right after school gets out. So we'll have overtime, not overtime, but we'll have additional pay there. And there's routine overtime for custodial work to get the grounds ready for spring sports. So we projected that, and also the sub-account, while we still have $14,000 remaining historically the last three months, based on the history, is a little bit. the last three months, based on the history, is a little bit more than what we have remaining by about $15,000. So that count will be over. So we projected that in. I have to tell you, we were kind of flying blind on the encumbrance process that we were doing in the past before we'd done this payroll conversion. So to come pretty close to that $250,000 number, these encumbrances are now real time. So if someone leaves, the day they leave, the encumbrance is released. That really wasn't done in the past. It was done for purchase orders. So I have a lot more confidence in the number. But I think we did a pretty good job running blind for that matter. We did an analysis on the operating expenses. And right now, on a conservative basis, we're looking at about an additional $100,000. And that's primarily in utilities, even with the bad winter we had. And that's why I also think we can absorb the air conditioning cost that gets approved in the existing budget that was presented for 14. And this is also net of the snow, removal estimate at this stage. We still have some lingering bills out there. Transportation. I just don't know.
Yeah, it says utilities, transportation, property insurance.
Yes.
Or workers' compensation.
Property and workers' comp. So again, we'll start to actually show you the projections in the next budget meeting, in the next meeting we have, we'll show you the year-end balances based on our projections. So.
Okay, and Chris, I just want to ask, the utilities, I thought it was a set rate. So how is it they were making me savings now?
Basically, the rate, the usage and rate affect the utility bill.
So there is a usage.
There is a usage in the sense that your utilization rate could go up based on the number of days.
Or price per gallon is fixed, but if we decide to crank the heat up to 100 degrees, we pay for it.
Correct. So, but I mean, and we actually keep in it the usage by month, by meter. So we do a thorough analysis on that. As far as the payroll conversion, I have to tell you, my staff's done a great job. Because I've been so involved in the budget, they really took the lead on this project with just me giving direction on occasion. We're going live April 12th. I noticed this going out to all employees, basically to say it should be seamless to them. And I really wanted to show you some of the benefits we're going to reap. It's only a small piece of this, but I've attached copies of the actual contracts that are going to break from the system. Whereas in the past, they were manually generated. I mean, I don't want to make it sound like there was a lot of work, but at the same time, this will minimize a lot of that work. And this is a work in process. We can add things, we can delete things. But I really just wanted to show the school committee various types of contracts. And we do this so people know they have a position, especially 10-month employees, so they don't collect all summer. So that's great news. Waste water treatment, I apologize. I thought I'd have the number today because the bid opening was today. It's not a formal bid because it's under the $25,000. So I wasn't in attendance and I just didn't have a chance to call Don. He estimated the cost to be between $8,000 and $11,000 because of prevailing wage. We do have to pay that. The middle school air conditioning project, if that does, if that does come to pass, well, regardless, I think it needs to come before the school committee, May 7th. I had a conversation with a vendor, lowest bid vendor. And I gave him the timetables based on the town meetings in the Sherborne electoral vote or debt exclusion vote. And he said it's going to be a real tight window based on that May 14 deadline. So what I would recommend to the school committee is that you, at the May 7th meeting, award it subject to the annual vote. And I'll have Rick Manley give us the motion of the Sherborne.
So we won't need to wait until June?
We won't, yeah, right, exactly. So do you want me to cover that issue right now on a motion that?
Yes, so, yes, go ahead, Chris.
Okay.
So that is the vote to amend the March 5th Regional School Committee capital items.
Right.
Can I ask a question regarding the waste water treatment?
Yeah.
Well, no, actually, the air conditioner, sorry, but just around the town vote. So Dover is not debt exclusion?
No.
They don't have to?
Right.
They do it within their levy limit because they don't have to exclude it.
Oh. So it just requires?
If town meeting approves it.
Then it's all set.
Then we get viral if Sherborne approves it on a prop debt exclusion. Okay, so there's a motion before the school committee. Kevin Bott, and neither Rick nor I picked up, and that's why we have other lawyers look at this stuff, realizes a 60-day rule pertaining to once the school committee votes, the clock starts to tick, and the towns have to call a meeting, an annual or a meeting, within that 60 days. If they do not, then the borrowing comes authorized as a result. So in an effort to honor the towns' commitments, and the town meetings are pushed back this year because of the way the calendar falls and the bylaw requires them, Rick is proposing, I think it's on the third page, the following paragraph be ordered. "Notwithstanding provisions of Chapter 71, Section 16D of the General Laws to the Contrary, no amount shall be borrowed or extended pursuant to this vote until each of the towns of Dover and Sherborne have voted to approve the debt authorized by this vote at their 2013 annual town meeting."
All right, so please forgive me because I'm doing the blank. So Chris, of your, of the, because I'm looking electronically, you have the paperwork voted and there's a list of the capital improvement items on one page. And then the next page has?
Those were voted on March 5th.
Right.
Those were the motions voted on March 5th.
Okay.
He's only asking you to add that second paragraph on the third, well, it's the third, Rick.
It's the third page, yes, I'm looking at notwithstanding.
That one, yeah.
Okay. And that's page 32, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So does everybody understand why we need to vote this motion?
I understand.
It's just to change the date so it fits in with the town meetings. All right, so I would like to entertain a motion as read by Christine to amend the March 5th, 2013 vote. And Amy, you'll be able to put this piece right in as the motion? And a second?
Second.
Is that clear enough?
Yeah, it's clear, but I just want to, I understand what, I understand about the 60 days and all that. So, but the way this third page is written, essentially, we're going to, are we voting with this notwithstanding piece? Is that what this, is that what?
It's allowing the, if you don't vote this, okay, then basically, the town meetings will not have any impact.
No, I understand that, I understand that.
We're adding this, it's an amendment to the.
Amendment to the motion.
Yeah, so it should read that we're amending the motion as March 5th, 2013 to include notwithstanding what Chris read. Okay, so, and who is giving us the recommendation to do this?
Both the, our barn council and the town of Dover. And it was also passed along to the town council of Sherborne.
And they?
Matter of fact, they had also raised this as an issue after we had heard from Kevin. So everyone's aware that we don't want to supersede town meeting.
No, I understand it completely. I guess I just sort of wonder, why don't we just re-vote it? Because like, I, this seems a little bit like it's sort of separate and on its own. And I just, I have this little bit of a nervousness about the fact that it's this sort of standalone thing that we're not, you know, we're saying by words, we're tying it back to this vote we made. But why don't we just like re-vote it and re-date?
Well, you could, but there's a process then that kicks in. And the process is we have to recertify.
Oh, okay.
But I can.
I mean, it's not easy.
Alan, if you want, I can include what was voted in the new minutes.
That would be great.
And then the last, and then, and even to just take everything that's here voted, right?
Yes, yes. But I believe.
Otherwise, it just, it just got so out there by itself.
Wasn't the air conditioning and the 122, weren't those separate votes?
Yes, that's right. To both.
Okay, all right.
And we'll review the meeting minutes that Amy prepares and see that we're all comfortable because I agree with what you're saying going on. All right, any other questions? All those in favor? So four yeses and two apies?
And did you, the motion of a second on that motion?
Oh.
Richard and Alan.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, right. Okay, so before we move on, I just want to make sure with what Chris presented for FY13, since we haven't heard about FY13 for a while, were there any questions that you wanted to bring up to Chris about FY13? Okay, so FY14, it says, next to the budget, it says, action required. There's no action there. The subset one, we just voted. And subset two, vote to approve the final warrant articles. We don't have to.
No.
Yep, we are all set. And is there any more news from the town of Sherborne in terms of the wording of the warrant articles at town meeting?
I had emails from Dave Williams. And he had sent me the motions that were being prepared by the town council. And I have forwarded those to Rick Manley. And Rick called me this tonight, but we missed telephone communications. I don't believe there's an issue with.
Okay, but are the written motions nice and clear? And it doesn't include the, an intermunicipal agreement in free cash? Or is that still in there?
No, from what I understand, it is not in there.
Okay, all right. And we'll see it after you speak with Rick Manley. All right. So we know what I'm speaking to?
I do.
Okay. All right. And the extra compensatory considerations, this is, has been on our docket and we've just been postponing the vote while we went through the budget cycle. But we really do need to address whether we're approving any of the recommendations or not. So Mr. Bliss?
Sure. The, there was a memo that was included back in November, dated November 20th, 2012, excuse me, from the superintendent. And it concerns the request for, one, two, three, four, five recommendations that were brought forward. And at the time, there was no movement because we were in the throes of budget development, obviously fiscal 14. So we revisit this this evening with the idea that, you know, as we all know, the fiscal 14 budget, line by line, does not include funding for any of these. So if it would be the pleasure of the committee to take action on any of these particular items, it would be incumbent on us to identify exactly where that would come from. Christine and I had a meeting prior to this meeting. And if there were any action taken, we would really have to go into the reserve line, to the superintendent's reserve, to fund any of this. Because as we know, there really is not a funding mechanism elsewhere within the construct of the budget. So there was a, with respect to the grade management request, there was a recommendation to increase this by one point, by a ratio of 1.5 in the peer helping program, to set that at a 1.0 stipend for the American Field Service to set that at 1.0, the Alton Frisbee Club at 1.0, and the cheerleading at a 2.0 stipend allocation. And that's, there hasn't been discussion at this body because at that point, we had decided to take no action, I believe.
Just so happens in our meeting minutes, I've got the fifth is a note under item number 7D, extra compensatory, that Ms. Briggs recommended, did not, said cannot recommend the increased cost to ex, compensatory requests at that point. And I very much do know what she was saying. She wouldn't recommend them being put into the budget as we were getting down to the wire, just as a point of reference on this here.
Okay, so this evening, I would like to entertain a motion that, how to phrase this, that no extra compensatory stipends be? That no action be taken on the extra compensatory ratios as submitted November 20th, 2012. A second, any discussion?
Just one point with respect to, and Ellen, thank you for bringing that up. That absolutely was Valerie's posture and may still well be. In discussions I've had with Denise, the one concern that we have concerns cheerleading. For years, we've had three parents, maybe more in particular, Mrs. Bornstein, Mrs. Holmes, and a few others who have graciously given their time to volunteer as our cheerleading coaches. And they're stepping away from that. So to go into it's advised wide open, realizing that we may well have students, and I'm sure we have students that want to do a number of things. But we have, for years, have had a cheerleading squad together. And they've had very dedicated coaches in place. We have every reason to believe there will be no mechanism to put someone in front of those cheerleaders next year in the form of a coach, absent of action taken here. So, and unlike, so you may say, well, that's also true of what about Frisbee? What about, what about? Those other programs are in their induction years, so to speak. So as opposed, you know, cheerleading is sort of a longstanding enterprise. So it would be to not offer something that we have, that's all. It's not to necessarily take a particular position on it other than it's an opportunity that's been made available and will. And please, Denise, do we have any other information?
No, and the, you know, the issue would be that the team that stays together would have to go out and do their own fundraising. And they will have to do some of that anyway. But I think they've brought a lot of spirit to the school community. And it would be disappointing to see the team possibly disband or the squad possibly disband because of lack of funds to pay a qualified coach.
Is it possible that boosters can support funding a coach? I mean, I think, you know, that, to my knowledge, cheerleading's been around for only like a couple of years. Not that.
Four.
Five, four, three. Okay. Okay, so, but I would like to suggest that maybe we ask the boosters if that's something that they can help us with. I mean, I just feel like it's kind of late in the budget process to be doing this. And there's other things that you can make the same argument for that, you know.
The peer helping advisor.
And not even, not even extra compensatory things. There are other items that didn't get put into our budget that you could make the same argument, you know, there's compelling reasons that we shouldn't fund them. And, you know, just for me, I would have a hard time supporting. And I'm a long-term non-sporter of these extra compensatory positions. And I've stated numerous times a lot, and we can do that again if people care here. But, you know, I, so for me personally, I'm just not, I'm just not there.
I can't, I can, I don't think that is something that boosters would support only because they've been very clear about funding capital items. And so they really specifically stayed away from coaching or any sort of personnel-related underwriting. So I think of that, I'd be very surprised based on what I've understood to be their mission for that to happen unless.
No, so three weeks ago, I had one of my transition meetings with a few members of the boosters and I thanked them for meeting. It was extremely helpful. And at the very outset of the meeting, a point was made very clear to me that the mission is really of a capital nature, potentially student-athlete recognition, opportunities of that nature, but not in the enterprise of scholarships and certainly not in personnel-supported initiatives. So that was sort of right out of the gate at the meeting.
I didn't quite understand the line about superintendent. If, if we were to say yes to any of these items, where would they come out? And how would that work?
There's a, there's a, there's a superintendent's reserve line that, you know, since Valerie's been here, she's always made sure, with the support of grade school community members, that that's, that's funded at a certain level for, largely for contingencies that may come up.
We haven't even started the school year.
We haven't started the school year, and we'd be looking to a reserve line. I had a meeting this week with Mr. Rollins to go over a few different athletic issues, and I checked on the numbers with cheerleading, and currently, there would be five people, presently, you know, but he said that probably could go up to eight or 10 by the time school opens in the fall. I just wanted a point of context.
Can I add something? It just says, you know, whether you're for it or against it, I do want to tell the school committee, and I'm reviewing this, our student activity numbers are way, I don't know why, that's why we're analyzing, they're nowhere near the budgets, so.
I'm sorry, the, the fees that we're getting, receiving versus the number of students participating?
Right, so, to be expanding upon these things, when we really don't, we don't even, at this stage, I don't know what's driving these downward trends, maybe it's just revenue hasn't been collected, I've discussed it with both headmasters, we are looking into it. I would, I mean, just two months ago, you people were evaluating, well, maybe we need to carve out some other extra compensatory activities, and here we're, and I'm not saying one should be better than the other, but I think to do this.
Chris, you're referring specifically to activities versus sports fees?
Right, this, this would be an activity.
But I mean, in terms of collection.
Right.
It's the activities that are done, not the sports fees.
That's correct.
Ellen, you have done, you've been on contract negotiations. This issue of how to carve out the existing funds for extra, for, for activities has been a thorn in the side of the school committee, in terms of how best to do this for years, has it come up in contract negotiations?
It came up la- this last time around in particular, and there was this, an MOU form.
There was an MOU?
Yes, and Miss Lannigan served on that, and I believe that, I wasn't on that, but I believe that there were some sort of preliminary determinations, and I believe the interest was to sort of bring it forward again during contract negotiations, with some suggestions on on how to address it, I'll just say that, because, so.
Because we really do want to encourage, we, we do want to find out, what do the students want? What, what are, is the faculty really excited about offering, or, or people in the community? And how do we reevaluate that, so that we don't get stuck in the situation which we've been in for at least six or seven years, which is not to fund anything new?
So, the MOU Salary Matrix Group Committee has a draft version of a PowerPoint that was sent at the end of last week, I think we began taking a look at these, and that will be brought forward at the May Regional School Committee meeting, so there is sort of fat checking going on behind some of the slides currently, and it's a, it's a very insightful, extremely thorough report, and with some pretty concrete suggestions for moving forward.
Well, again, so for me, I, I sort of feel like, you know, maybe it's something that should be fundraised until we sort of have a better handle on where we are, and where we're going to go, and, and it's interesting that, you know, we grouped together on this extra compensatory, both, you know, student-related activities, and then, you know, administrative things, so, especially in light of what Mr. Bliss is saying, that there's, there's sort of information that will come forward to us.
I agree, I'd like the committee to, so the, the motion on the table is not to take any action, is actually, so, that would close this for this year, unless someone wants to make an amendment, I'd like to go forward with a vote. Oh, we have somebody from the audience, Kathy.
Can I just ask, just for clarification, what would happen if the peer helping extra comp time dollars weren't there? Could you just talk a little bit about that impact?
Denise, or Steve?
We've, we've, I'm s- we've actually just revised the guidance director's job description, and we've made sure that that's been embedded, sort of in anticipation that this was forthcoming, and to make sure that there are critical components that have been embedded therein, so that that's not lost in the wake of what we thought would be a decision this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, all those in favor of no further action on these extra compensatory stipend requests? Aye, Carrie's four with two absences. We are moving down to special items and new business, school choice, Mr. Bliss, this is an action required?
Sure.
I have to say, this is the most information I've ever received on school choice, and I said, wow!
You're the third meeting, that's why.
This is great, what's that?
Because you're the third school committee to get this.
Well, every year, we, every year, we field questions about school choice.
Yeah, no, this was great.
So we felt like, you know, let's just put some information in the construct of the report, and about, is transportation covered?
You don't have to read it, already.
No, folks can read, but is transportation covered, or is it not? How's the rate established, etc.? There is a formula in place, if you, if you write into it, it does cap out at $5,000 a student, and that's a critical component when you, when you consider our per pupil expenditures in any one of our three districts, so I think sort of the, the motion is always put forward, it's put forward annually and just sort of voted on, but it seems that maybe not so much at the region, but definitely at the elementary school committees, there's sort of lingering questions, especially in the advent of depressed enrollments at both of those schools. There was some modicum of an appetite to entertain school choice, and I think the critical thing people need to remember is that even if one of the elementary school districts were to open up to school choice, you can be quite deliberate in what grades you want to accept, and how many students, that's all wonderful. However, when students enter sixth grade, we are a totally separate school district, so absent of a favorable vote for school choice participation at the region, those students would need to know at the elementary level that they're in a terminal relationship, in the sense that there's no place for them to go after grade five, and having come from a school district that was massively attached to school choice, in a big way, we have five towns, six school committees, it, it took our regional school committee.
Kill myself.
Did we touch your nerves?
This is a lot to talk, oh, really. It, it took an act of the regional school committee to say, we honor any of the school choice students who are in the pipeline from the elementary schools coming up before, otherwise you have to be very honest with families in saying, you're not really buying into a K-12 experience, you're buying into a K-5 experience.
So, go ahead.
So, in, I, I was all set to get excited about this, and I said that $5,000.
Yeah.
I bursted.
We're going to make it up on volume what we lose on individual visits. But, but it's, it's curious to me that, that any school district would be particularly interested in this, because it's such a small amount of money compared to what it presumably costs almost any district to, any district anybody wants to go to, to educate a student.
But it was specifically my, my prior district, it was just that, I mean, the PPE being at, you know, 8,000, maybe 8,400, if, if you had depressed enrollments in different pockets, and it wasn't economies of scale issue, then all of a sudden, 5,000, and you have 50 kids in the system, and what the system did is they literally channeled all that money into a reserve account, and it became the mechanism for funding technology. So, if it was 200 or 250,000 bucks a year, you know, but the downfall being the districts become increasingly dependent on that money, and then all of a sudden, when
Enrollment.
Yeah, you might have a community that really is pretty actively, active in sending new kids, as it were, or kids come from, the minute they build a new school over there, or for some reason, the school choice climate changes, so too does that funding arm in a, in a New York minute, so it can be, it can foster codependence on the money that's on.
In a New York minute, did you get that?
Yeah, you did.
In a New York minute.
You're showing your ass now.
From Mr. Ross.
So, that's the school choice.
So, the elementary schools have voted, sorry, go ahead, finish your thought.
I have two other thoughts, go ahead.
Finish both.
Okay, so, so one argument in favor is that while it, you know, while the average per pupil cost is whatever, it's 13 or 14 grand, in fact, when you add one student, it doesn't cost you any more than $14,000 to educate, because you're not going to hire, you know, another 10th of a teacher, or whatever it is, and so, so one could argue that, you know, two or three students, or something like that, it's some more money, and it doesn't actually cost you.
But you can't be selective.
Right.
Right, the process, you must be blind.
Right, you have to, you have to. And then the other question, I know this has come up from time to time, about faculty, kids, can we be selective in that way, or if we open up, we open up everybody?
We open.
Yeah, we open up everybody.
That's the issue.
Yeah, yeah, no, I get it.
In fact, most districts that have open seats, they draw, they have a lottery system, and, you know, one of the districts that I'm familiar with on April 1st, that's the drawing, and they have hundreds and hundreds of kids in that drawing, and whatever you choose.
And it's just a lottery. I'm done.
You're done, so, so we're the third to vote, so the
They voted against.
They voted against, alright, so I would like to entertain a motion to withdraw from the school choice program for the 2013-14 school year because of space limitations as recommended by administration.
So.
And a second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Four, two absences, thank you.
Shall I ask, I'm sorry, my brain must not be working as fast as sometimes does. Can I ask a question about cheerleading, just to go back one second?
Yeah.
If, if the group of students who do want to follow up with that, want to do something next year, and they fundraise for a coach, would that be a gift that we recognize, just like we do an assistant coach of a different sport? Or is there anything that would make it different, because it's a club and not a team? Could they basically walk down that same path?
I, I think so, I don't, I can't think of any reason why it wouldn't happen that way.
Because I, I am sad, I mean, it would make, it would be sad if we were to, we lose that function within the school, but I just want to know what their options are, okay. Got it, sorry, I'm a little behind.
That's okay.
Shall I, there was one thing I just wanted to update, you know, under my section, FY14, I received an email from, we look to see if House Ways and Means have come out with anything.
Thank you, yes.
I don't know, Ellen, where you, where you found that information, but Jay Sullivan sends an email to all, all business managers and whoever, basically saying that they anticipated it would be out, the detail would be out April 10th, around, around or about, and also in April, we'll know the full extent of the cuts for the federal grants, so I just wanted to share that with you.
Thank you. So at our May meeting, we'll be able to, well.
If it's good news, you'll hear one right away.
Yeah, I was going to say, we could probably share it earlier, but we will also address it at the May meeting.
Yeah.
Alright, thank you, so, Michael Lee.
Can I actually ask a question? I mean, given the, given the size of the flux that we have seen in, in these budgets this year, are there any implications for us, for town meeting, if we've got, you know, suddenly we've got an extraordinary amount of new money that we weren't anticipating? Does, I don't quite understand how this plays out, I know we've certified budget, we're giving out assessments, and all of a sudden, we're looking at a quarter million dollars we weren't expecting, what happens to that money?
It goes into E and D, because, don't forget, when we presented that additional E and D, your E and D would be down to 2.3%, which is very low, lowest, the lowest I've ever been, and we're anticipating there will be some group of money that will come in to get us up past that 2%. Also, we don't know the extent of the FY14 federal grant cuts, which have huge implications personnel-wise.
FY13?
Or 14.
Oh, 14, okay.
Alright, but to, so, so Richard's not wondering if that's, if we should do anything else, he's just wondering, is there any other option, right? If it comes in, it, it goes into E, so we can't change the assessment to the towns? I guess we don't have that option.
You could do, I mean, that's an option, that's definitely an option.
Oh, it is an option, okay.
You, you can do anything up until the town meeting floor, well, you'd have to collectively have a meeting before then. Well, you could make a change to town meeting floor to bring the budget down to zero.
But, but in fact, all the information that you're talking about is still, correct me if I'm wrong, provisional, even once it comes out.
Oh, definitely.
It would be foolhardy.
Right, so.
Right.
But by the time we get real numbers from the state, we'll have loms that have passed town meeting.
Everybody will be on vacation.
Yeah.
You hope.
Just so the, the regional school committee members know, our exposure on, on grants, and we, we collect this, in fiscal 13, we'll collect $411,524 in a combination of grants, the two largest being Special Education IDEA Grant Fund Code 240, that's about $240,000, and that's what Christine is referring to, the number of salaries for special education staff tied up in that figure. So that's, it's some exposure, for sure.
Thank you.
To what extent, we'll know more.
Now, can I ask you a question about that? How, how is it, is it, is it, is it a historical event that a grant comes in, and then you hire somebody, and, and forever after, you actually consider that person to be funded by the grant, rather than the grant funds the entire operation? And something else needs to be cut off, or, or these dollars are targeted for special ed faculty, is that?
They, they really are, they're definitely targeted for special ed personnel or program, and then however we deploy those limited financial resources, if they're tied to compensation, we have to file either quarterly or monthly reports based to notify the personnel that in fact they're being paid through federal grant lines.
Okay, Michael Lee thought that he would make it here by 7:30 this evening, and so he
No, he, he texted me, he's not coming.
He's not coming, okay, so the item here that says, discussion town treasure and tax collector update, I believe I can address that on his behalf. So, Michael was interested in taking out nomination papers in the town of Sherburne for the town treasure and tax collector positions, and he's since said that he's interested in the tax treasure position, not both.
The town treasure.
I'm sorry, town treasure, thank you, is that your?
You said tax.
Yeah, alright, yeah.
He's going to make a takeout of his.
The town, town treasure, so what I asked for him to do for homework, to see, in the event that we need to discuss tonight, is, you know, is that, is there any conflict of interest? So, he did some checking, and I did some checking, he checked with his own council, and he was also directed by Glenn Kutcher of the Mass Association of School Superintendents to check with the
School committees.
Of school committees, you just keep correcting me, because we'll get, we'll get it there. Trying to jump ahead.
Texas Village.
To check with the State Ethics Commission, and the individual, him or herself, had to check with the Ethics Commission. The bottom line is, if a town has a bylaw that states it's a conflict of interest, or that you can't have more than one, then you can't, but otherwise, it's truly the voters. So he confirmed with the Ethics Commission, and I also checked with, just make sure there's nothing on Dover, there's nothing on doverside either, I didn't think it would come into play, but I wanted to check in with them. So this is just a, a heads up, I don't think that there's any discussion, but that he's possibly moving forward with the nomination papers for town treasure.
Well, he would have had to make it see, because that date was passed.
Well, he made it, but he could, he's still withdrawn if there was an issue on the regional school committee.
So I, I don't have an issue, but I have a sort of concern or a thought. So I went on the Sherburne website, and went right through the bylaws, looking specifically for the job descriptions of the tax collector and treasurer, to find out what that is, what do they do. It doesn't exist that I could find on the website, I'm sure it's somewhere that maybe is available to the public, that I'm just not finding, so, you know, I want to know what the job description is, because I think, when I think about, for instance, teacher contract negotiations, ratification, voting, and I think about somebody being employed in a town that has responsibility for finances, maybe there's a conflict there, and I think it's, I would want to understand better what that, what the responsibilities are for that position, and I, I would want us as a committee to really give some thought to them just being maybe, maybe not ethically or legally a conflict, but perceptually a concept, a conflict, and, you know, perception is reality for a lot of people. And so I think at, at a minimum, I would like to suggest that we give very careful thought to the role that a person who's employed in a finance capacity in one of our member towns would take in doing something like negotiating contracts, towns would take in doing something like negotiating contracts, and that, you know, maybe for perception's sake alone, at a minimum, that person should not be part of any negotiating team, and then when it comes to a vote, I don't know if it would be further necessary to, you know, abstain or recuse yourself, something like that. But I think thought should be given to, you know, what, what does that mean, and what is the, the asset capacity of that job, and not being able to find it, I, I don't know. The website in Sherburne does say, particularly around the tax, the town accountant, you know, it mentions, thank you, treasurer, it mentions finance this, finance that, you know, kind of stuff, so, very short little blurb I could find, but not enough information to be able to, and then once I did have that information, I'm not so sure I would necessarily be the proper person to be able to say, you know, this and this don't go together well. So, I, I think it would be helpful to see a job description and to understand.
So, you raise an interesting point, you feel like, you raise an interesting point. So, on the one hand, it's, it's not our business to advise somebody who wants to run for an office, even if they're one of, even if they're on this committee.
Right.
Right. But, but in fact, if we see a potential conflict on our board, it is well within our purview to write policies that prevent those conflicts from having effects, independent of whatever may be in town bylaws, and independent of whether it's, it's ethical for, for anyone to, to serve, to serve. So, so you're right, that the job description is critical, obviously, because you need to know what, what the potential is, and then we would need to have some discussion about, you know, whether we see that there's a potential for conflict, and then we would need to decide whether we bring a policy, if we need to put in place that we don't already about, about how we avoid those conflicts. And that, that I think is perfectly, is a perfectly legitimate function of the school committee, advising one of our members, or telling one of our members they can't, it obviously isn't our business, but in fact, explaining or contemplating the implications for the minutes, that's, that's, that's part of what we would have to do.
So, that would be further down the road. I, I do, one interesting piece that Michael heard, and he sent me the email from the, the Ethics Commission. On the regional school committee, we always speak about having a regional school committee hat on, even though we're from certain towns, and in light of Michael being interested in a position for the town of Sherburne, would he be wearing the town of Sherburne hat when he serves on the regional school committee? So, it was interesting that the Ethics Commission points out, you are wearing that municipal hat, so even though you're on the regional school committee, you are wearing the hat of your municipality, which is different than...
But you're not being paid by it.
No, but that's how, in terms of, in terms of the hat you're supposed to be wearing, which is contrary to oftentimes...
I'm sorry, I didn't understand what you're saying.
I'll forward it to you.
Yeah.
So...
But the implication is, you can never not be, be town treasurer, even...
So, we were wondering if he was wearing the hat of the town of Sherburne, can he be...
Unbiased.
Unbiased, as he sits on a regional school committee, who's supposed to be a regional school committee member, not a representative of a town per se. The Ethics Department says, no, when you're sitting on the regional school committee, you are wearing the hat of your town. That was my layman's terminology, and I will forward the email. So, we try and think we're, we're a separate entity, and we need to...
Oh, I see, oh, they're saying it applies to all of us, not just him.
Right, right, right. Which is different than how the regional school committee has seen itself as members.
But isn't there a lot of precedence on other school committees for, for members of, employees of the town to sit on, on, on their school committee?
The same town?
They, so, the voters decide.
Right.
Yeah, the voters decide.
I don't know, I guess I, I just feel like, I, I want to make sure that we're not overstepping the bounds, and in the end, it sounds that the voters are sure.
Yeah, so we're not doing anything.
Right.
But, but should it come to pass, the school committee could see, if, if Michael, for instance, wanted to be on contract negotiations, and we decide who, the committee votes to see who's going on contract negotiations, we may discuss that. Is that an example?
That's correct.
Okay. And then we can either just vote it, or we could set a policy.
And policies are always voted by the full school committee.
But that's true for any, you know, sort of function that an individual school committee ever serves as a representative, it, you know, when you're serving on the search committee, you know, if somebody on the school committee thought, well, Richard wouldn't belong there because, you know, whatever, some reason that you perceive as a conflict, or as a reason why he wouldn't be a good representative, these school committees can say, you know, you've got this going on, I don't think this is a good match, so let's look at somebody else on the committee. So, I mean, there's, same thing can apply if, if people on the committee think that somehow it doesn't match up with the, some of the tasks that he would serve as in, in his capacity as school committee. And, you know, again, my, my point is sort of, sometimes I think perception is reality, and I think when it comes to something like negotiations, everyone just needs to make, to be clear that that's, that's okay.
Right, okay. So, there is no...
Sometimes it do, but...
I'll suggest that Michael watch the meeting tonight, so he, he gets a full update of what was put out there.
And maybe he can get, maybe he's got a copy of the job description, he can just forward it to all of us, or just...
Well, I mean, that's, we can't, we're not going to do anything now, anyway, but yes, we could, if it comes to pass, pass.
Correct, right.
All right, the advisory warrant committee's update, there really isn't an update, other than to say, thank you, thank you, thank you profusely, for incredible communication and professionalism that I received, or we received, from our liaisons and the Sherburne Advisory Committee and the warrant committee this year. It was really helpful when Ts weren't crossed, that we got emails, and you helped us cross them, so thank you very much for the communication. The other item here was to see about the Sherburne articles, so we'll find out after McMahonley reviews them.
Can I actually say one thing about that?
Yeah.
And that is, it was, it really was a terrific process, and thank you guys for doing it, and partly it was a terrific process, because even though the regional school committee is supposed to be the crucible at which the conflicting interests of the two towns get turned into, you know, whatever good news comes out of it, in fact, I think having the meetings with all of us, and, and having the representatives from the two towns talk to each other in, in reasonable ways, was really helpful. We, I didn't feel it as though we actually had to solve the entire problem ourselves, and that, to me, was, was very valid, but I think you guys did it, a lot of work solved your problems for us.
And I think what, what I heard was, it's nice to see the regional school committee and the administration really wrestling with budget issues, and that seemed to...
Wrestle.
Seemed to go a long way, you know, among, among our committee, that, that it looked like we didn't just try and pass a budget easily and quickly, that we were really trying to work with two guidances, and so, long, and, and we're at this point. So, people come to town meeting, please. The other item is advocacy for the warrant articles. Pardon me?
Speaking of...
Speaking of the warrant.
...to town meeting.
Richard, did you want to lock that?
Yeah, so, I, I think it may be clear to all of us, but in case it's not, we are allowed to do certain things, and we're not allowed to do other things. We aren't allowed to spend any public funds whatsoever on advocating for issues that we, that are coming before the voters on a ballot. Curiously, we actually are allowed to spend money on issues that come at town meeting. Why that's true, I don't know, but obviously, I think we want to step away from spending public funds on, on either of those, on either of those functions. We are, however, it's very important to note, as elected officials, we are allowed to advocate as much as we want for issues that we feel are important at town meeting and on the ballot, and, and therefore, if a school committee members feel it's important to do so, they are welcome to support these ballot measures in any way that they see fit, as long as they don't use public funds. Public funds include school copying, we can, we probably, sorry, we, we can't or probably shouldn't at least send home notices, either by email, or the, you know, how much does an electronic cost, but, you know, we certainly couldn't make paper copies and send them home, and my guess is, you're not really allowed to do that with, with electronic newsletters either, there's some level at which that becomes a public fund of, of support for your position. But we certainly are allowed to attend meetings of, of any group that'll have us, and talk about reasons why we think that, that these warrant articles are valuable, and indeed why, why our operating budget is valuable as well to, to support. And, so, if anybody advice you too, and you feel as though that's something you should do.
So, to that point, I did contact the CSA at Pine Hill to see if I could go and give a three-minute info session on the air conditioning proposal, which I did this morning. Positive is meeting, Scott, you mentioned he's meeting next...
Tuesday.
Tuesday, and I'm attending that one as well. The, and Richard is going to, so it's literally a three-minute explanation to get people up to speed, is going to the transition evening, Thursday night, for, for the fifth grade parents, because a, a lot of parents just don't know about this issue, and particularly if they're elementary parents. So, I felt a little bit today, when I was speaking in Pine Hill, that I'm preaching to the choir, but, as I said to Scott, but we were asking the choir to show up at town meeting, and the, the ballot questions, ballot questions in Sherburne. So, we really are trying to get our constituents to town meeting, and that's the effort that we need to do, so to give them just a little bit of background, and then at town meeting, they'll get, they'll get more of the formal presentation, and they can make their vote. With respect to the Chicaring parent group, is that also PTO?
Dover.
Dover PTO. I'm unable to attend theirs, it's on the 25th...
Of April?
Of April 26th, so I haven't responded yet, because I just got word yesterday. So, so, so I was going to connect and see if maybe Dana could help, or, or something to that effect. So, the last effort, or one of the last efforts I think we could consider is, usually, word of mouth goes out really successfully through sports clubs, so Dover Sherburne Baseball, or Dover Sherburne Soccer, so if we could alert the parents of those clubs to disseminate information, that would be another way that we could get the, the word out.
Is the three-minute thing, obviously, that's a oral discussion of it, is, is there anything in writing that we could use to get to the sports clubs that then they could disseminate?
Yes.
But isn't there a frequently asked question?
There is, yes.
Yes.
So, this, so when I went to the CSA today, one of the co-presidents asked if I could forward the frequently asked questions, so when I forwarded to her, I sent her that, I sent her the middle school study, which is your PowerPoint presentation, and then I just told her when the town meetings were, and when the election was in Sherburne, and sent it on, and I'm hoping CSA, that's what I envisioned, that they'll then let parents know themselves, so I could do the same thing.
I would envision that.
Did you just wrinkle your nose?
I might, I'm sorry.
It won't, like, that, that won't happen, or that...
Yeah, well, it used to be in the past that that was not, that didn't happen, now they've changed on, then a few years on Pine Hill.
It was received well, and requested.
There are, there are weekly emails from CSA that go to parents that are separate from Pine Hill.
Okay.
That they would put informational stuff like that in.
Okay.
And at Chicaring, they have their own separate website, so they could easily post that kind of information on the website.
So, in terms of this advocacy, we don't need to spend more evenings, more time this evening, but that's what we're doing, and if you can think of more ways, I'll contact you, for instance, Dana, in terms of club sports, if you can think of other ways, that would be helpful. Is it still airing on cable, Richard, to your knowledge?
I don't know.
So, we'll check and see.
It is. What about, I don't ask why I know that, but it is.
What about the council meetings are there, because that, those are, if you think about who is at town meetings, many of the citizens are part of, at least in Dover COA, I don't know, I'm sorry, I don't know that.
I would love to do that, because I really do, I, I find that oftentimes, they are very, very supportive of the schools, and so I don't want to not go to their meetings to think, because this wouldn't be something that they'd support. I, I find that they're phenomenal in both towns, so I'll make a note of that and find out when the dates are.
I'd like to go to groups that don't support it, so if you don't, just let it go.
Right.
Okay, so that's that piece there. Let's, us, please, if there's nothing further, we'll move on to approval of meeting minutes. We have several meeting minutes, so I'd like to take them separately. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the Dover Sherburne Regional School Committee meeting minutes of February 5th, 2013.
Subtitled.
And a second?
Second.
Are there any additions, changes, comments?
Yes. Item seven, C.
Oh, C.
Yes.
It says, so it says capital plan update, there's currently $35,000 included for capital updates in the FY14 budget. The capital, this is the part, the capital plan analysis recommends an increase in that line item to 122. None of the items identified in the 122 are capital items, but rather operating maintenance, so...
I was going to scrap, oh, I was looking to scratch that sentence.
Okay, good.
Right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
From, from the point of none of, I mean, the sentence?
Yeah, just, just...
Well, no, no.
I mean, we also did increase the line item, did we?
We didn't increase line item.
No.
Okay.
Just go to the second and the third line.
Okay, so the, so Amy, the capital plan analysis recommends that sentence, and none of the items, sentences. All right, I was in agreement with that. Is there other stuff?
F.
F.
Like, the second left sentence, this Martin, she has provided an estimate across the dots, I can't read it, but it should be O, this is it.
Yeah.
That's all I have.
Okay.
I'd just like to put out in 7A, the second line, the paragraph, the sentence that is at the end, I think that's probably truer than we know, where it says, "As a result of the current dual process..." I believe it should be dual A, Al, but...
I don't know.
Yeah.
The Swarts or Pistols used lately.
I'm correct.
All right, any, any other changes for February 5th? All those in favor as amended?
Aye.
Aye, four, and two absences. The next meeting minutes are...
March 5th.
March 5th. I would like to entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes of March 5th as submitted, and a second?
Seven.
And any comments, changes?
Yes, on six, the sentence that's, the third sentence, it says, "This day discussed the E and D level, and that the administration is not comfortable using any additional E and D, because..."
Right. Do you see this, Chris?
I'm trying to find it.
Yes, go ahead, Ellen.
So, I just don't agree with that.
Yes, right.
Okay.
Yes, Amy?
Well, I watched it twice, because I found, when I reread it, that was what was said, and then it went, then further conversation reversed, so if you want to strike it, it's very confusing, but that is what was...
Well, it is interesting, because there was a meeting, I don't know if it was this one, where that was said, and then...
But then we got into the discussion of the, the potential to close out the CDC.
Right, so I would feel most comfortable striking it, because that wasn't the nature of the conversation.
I agree.
Okay. Anything else? But thank you, Amy, that's really cool to think that you're watching our meetings twice.
Just that part of it. The cinch, we'll next video.
All right, I'm sorry, was there anything else? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Carrie's four, with two absences. And lastly, the meeting minutes of March 13th, 2013. For some reason, I didn't print those, so, do I have a motion to approve them? And a second?
A second.
Okay. Any changes? I think that's why I didn't print them, they looked good. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four. That's great. I would like us to appreciate C, otherwise note, note the enrollments of April 1st, 2013. I also want to look at agenda items for our May meeting. We have, this is not the order that we brought them up, but we will have Mr. John Smith attend as the headmaster at the high school beginning this summer. We were going to have the MOU of... We were going to have the MOU of extra compensatory stipends. We were going to award the regional school committee, what do I have?
Air conditioning contract.
Air conditioning contract.
Pending approval.
Pending approval of town meeting. Thank you. This is quite cryptic. We were also going to hear the House budget update and federal grants, and...
With Brian Maringer, Assistant Headmaster.
Yes, good day.
And hopefully, we'll have handbooks and SIPs. Will we be doing those in May?
No, June.
June. Okay. This is our May meeting. So, also, the last, one last item, the last day of school, the schools have been receiving a lot of calls about when is the last day of school. Our joint meeting with the other two school committees is April 29th, so that is when we will vote to do it. The superintendent will give its recommendation, the superintendent's office will give its recommendation, which it always does. So, it's, would be virtually impossible to add another date with April vacation of the 16 committee members, so we just have to hold off to that date. Right. So, typically, we set it in April, but it's just happening really late this year. And that's all I have for extra, for business. Does anybody else want to add anything for May? Oh, I know. Cell tower update or anything that...
I have a little bit more homework to do.
Okay. So, if you'd like that to be an agenda item, even just to update...
Not for May.
Not for May, okay.
But I would like to have for May, potentially as a placeholder on the indoor track...
Oh, good, okay.
True.
Which I don't know, Mr. Rollins will be ready to bring it in May, but it really would need to come this school year if it's going to be considered for next year.
Correct. In the meeting that I had with him this week, he indicated that he has checked in with a couple of students and does not appear that forward progress has been made thus far anywhere on that, on the presentation, so I don't know whether that's changed.
Yeah, I just...
Did it make it to the advisory?
Yes.
And did they vote?
Yes. They voted seven to four of those members who were there to bring it forward to school committee. And the issue was whether there was, they were hoping to find, of the 105 students who signed the petition, to find a few that would start acting as champions for it for next year, as the two students who have been the champions are seniors and will be graduating. And so, they were hoping to find some people to step up.
Right.
And do that, and I guess that's where the bottleneck is.
So, why do we need students to step up at this point?
That's, that was exactly my question, was I, that was the hope, but I don't think it should be the requirement to have a student.
So, just to fill, fill people in a little bit, so, there was a request for a new sport to be added, and it went through the channels and was brought to the Athletic Advisory Council or Committee?
Committee.
Which, that's why I asked if they voted, because it was brought to them last...
Year ago.
...June, and no vote was taken. So, the vote has been taken, and typically, the channel is after there's a vote, if the vote is in favor of it, if that's a recommendation, it then comes to the school committee.
Right.
So, what's, can you fill in?
Yeah, Mr. Rollins is definitely under the impression that the students are to be working on a presentation of sorts, so there's clearly a communication breakdown somewhere, and I will dissect that, find out if it's his office that should be doing that, or if it's the students. And he's definitely under one impression, maybe they're under another.
But didn't they have, they, students, wasn't a presentation made at advisory?
Yes.
So, couldn't the same presentation be brought forward?
Yes.
Well, even if it's Heath Rollins or...
Yes, the students, they were hoping to find the next group who's going to take the torch from the two who have been carrying it.
Right, right. My concern, my concern is, I think the two students have carried the torch for a very, very long time, and I'm just wondering why it's still being carried, having to be carried by students. So, let's see if we can look to get it on the agenda, because if it's gone through advisories to recommendation, when it comes to school committee, so, there's got to be a lot of data that was presented to advisory that we could sift through in as part of our packet.
Right.
Okay. Okay. And the only last item is, and this is one that I brought up before, we do goal setting, so the joint meeting, April 29th, we're going to look at the teacher training with the new evaluation, evaluation tool, the actual training. We also want to plan goal setting, because we are going to be doing goal setting in June, so that administration has a clear sense of what they're working on in the summer months. And we don't want to have separate goals, we've learned that. So, at the, April 29th, we're going to have some discussion about how we're going to go through the goal setting process. I have asked the regional school committee administration to consider a workshop or some sizable chunk of time where we can decide how we want to look at finances or extra compensatory, just all the things that we don't have time to do. And it could be offsite, or it could be a Saturday. It's not to do, to, my intention is not to have a closed meeting, it can still be an open meeting, but I'm just trying to give us a chance where we could roll up our sleeves and dive in and hear from administration. So, I don't know if that's the flavor of the committee, and if we could do that in, I want to talk to administration, but does that make sense? The end of June, we could ask people coming off the committee, like Ellen, if they'd like to come on that day when we have new people. So, you know, our meeting is ending early, which is fabulous, but I really think we need some more time, other than this monthly meeting, to put some things on the...
So, on April 29th, we've arranged for Patty Grenier to be here from Teachers 21. Patty will be offering training to the school committees on the superintendent's evaluation system, as is in place at the state level. I believe then the idea is that we're going to move into the goal setting, to which Shelley referred, and to try to have the goal setting solidified for May-June, but then, separate apart from that entire process, we're contemplating the workshop, the sort of budget debriefing. And I thought we had originally, we envisioned a May date for that, I thought, but that may be a bit ambitious, going into early June, between with goal setting involved, so we're probably looking at June for that.
So, for an example...
There's the notion product of a workshop before, sort of, we put the, close the books on the entire budget building process to put our cognitive...
So, for example, Dana and Michael Lee worked really hard with you and Ralph Kelly around the capital items, and we had to keep deferring that conversation. We want to sink into that capital plan. We do know that there's fees that we have, we have the school participation, population participating, but the fees that we're receiving are low. Are we offering the right activities? You've always spoken about athletic fees and... Well, you know, if we had a full day, so we could compartmentalize how we're going to use the day. Michael brought up looking at how we do our budget in a different manner. It would just be a really healthy thing for us to do, but I agree, it might have to be... So, I don't know if we want the administration to offer sort of some structure to the suggestion and bring it, bring it to school committee?
Put our heads together on some days.
We are coming off, Ellen, so it's probably going to be coming off, but is that, does this sound like something that makes sense?
I certainly think devote, save that time of significant amount, and preparing for a single focus discussion is an excellent idea. I think there are a few things, you know, that we never quite give enough focus to. I would be a little wary just of having all of them stacked up on one, rather than that's going to be, just because one's exhaustion with the first wouldn't wait till the second. I'm for it.
I agree. I agree. So, that's why I'm saying, if we give some direction to the administration to say, they've lived with us, what key things should we start with that would help them a great deal, address student needs in the book, in the two schools, and we'll, we'll try and pull it off.
Good.
Okay. Okay, anything else? Did people receive the bullying survey?
It was just you, me, Robyn Hunter, and Claire Graham.
Oh, I did look to see. Okay. I'm going to forward it, but it was, um...
It's recent?
It was just today, and it was some mass equality, anyway, I'll forward it. I didn't look at it.
The survey of our kids or somebody?
Whether you're bullying...
I didn't look at it. If you're bullying a school...
I think it's meant for, as a school committee member.
My guess is, do we have, are we aware of bullying, bullying policy? That's my guess. Yeah, as school committee members, and so, I haven't looked at it, but I just want to make sure.
But it's from some independent groups, not like it's from...
The State Department.
Outside of the community.
Right. I think it's called mass equality. All right. At the time of 8:17, I entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
And a second? Good.